I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tupelo's regular city council meeting of October the 4th. At this time, we'll stand for, I'll give an invocation and Councilwoman Nettie Davis to give a pledge of allegiance and then we'll call the meeting to order. Let us pray. Father, thank thee for thy many blessings, keep us from harm, guide us and teach us to be true to each other ourselves in the command.
I'd like to call Mr. Green to come up and lead us in the pledge. Mr. Green is part of the neighborhood association down in Haven Acres.
Let's play the pledge. I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
This time, we call the meeting to order and I ask the Vice President, Travis Beard, to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
President Brown, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding number 48 in the matter of approval of change order number two for Court Street parking lot improvement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I got a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? The motion carries. The agenda's set. Proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda. Mayor, in the matter of proclamation for Pimlico Day.
Yes. I want to ask Brady Davis to come up and read that for us, the City.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the CEO of the Chickasaw Connaught Foundation and I'd just like to say thank you very much for the City of Tupelo, Mayor Todd Jordan, and the City Council to assist with the acknowledgement of Pimlico Day in lieu of Columbus Day on Monday, October 10th. We'll be having a re-flaying ceremony at 1:00 right outside the City Hall, so I encourage you all to attend. Whereas revered leader Chickasaw, revered Chickasaw leader Pimlico, also known as Mountain Leader, was born and resided in the heart of the historic home, Chickasaw homeland, located in present day Tupelo, Mississippi from approximately 1750 to 1798. And whereas, Pimlico was the most influential and important Chickasaw ally of the United States during the early formation of the New Republic, and his leadership was critical both for the United States and the Chickasaw Nation. Whereas, during the American Revolutionary War, Pimlico was given a commission of an officer by President George Washington, and in 1794, he was presented with a peace medal of President Washington, both for his service in the revolution and for his invaluable efforts in formalizing peaceful relations between the two nations. And whereas, Pimlico and President Washington signed the treaty between the Chickasaw and the United States of 1786, also known as the Treaty of Hopewell, which formalized the Chickasaw Nation's alliance with the fledgling United States government and formally defined tribal boundaries. And Pimlico acted as a Chickasaw diplomat in meetings with southeastern tribes, state governors, and President Washington. And whereas, in 2005, the Rotary Club of Tupelo was instrumental in commissioning and dedication of a six-foot-tall Pimlico statue which now stands prominently in the front of City Hall. And to this day, Rotary continues to work to increase public awareness of Pimlico's legacy and historical significance in Tupelo and Northeast Mississippi. And whereas, in 2008, the Nation proclaimed the 2nd Monday in October as Pimlico Day to be celebrated annually in perpetuity, and Pimlico is recognized as a seminal figure in the history of Tupelo and Northeast Mississippi. And whereas, the Chickasaw Connaught Foundation, along with the daughters of the American Revolution in the City of Tupelo, will continue to work with the Chickasaw Nation and other regional partners to increase awareness of the importance of Chickasaw culture and history and preserve, protect, and interpret Chickasaw culture and history in the historic Chickasaw homeland and therefore...
Now, therefore, I, Todd Jordan, Mayor Tupelo, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2022 as Pimlico Day. Yes, we're going. Ask our fire chief to come up and read this proclamation.
Okay, good. Have Fire Chief Kelly Elliott come up for Fire Prevention Week proclamation.
Good evening. I'd like to mention that this is the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week this year, so with that said, whereas the City of Tupelo is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Tupelo, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas, homes, fires killed 2,580 people in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms set smoke well before you can, alert you to danger an event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a reported home fire in half. And whereas, Tupelo residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Tupelo residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and know how to respond. And whereas, Tupelo residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Tupelo residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, Tupelo first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Tupelo residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind Tupelo residents it is important to have a home fire escape plan.
Now, therefore, I, Todd Jordan, Mayor of the City of Tupelo, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Tupelo to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Tupelo's Fire and Emergency Services.
All right, it doesn't look like we have any boys or girl scouts. We'll move to employee recognitions, Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Rudy Young, come on up. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Major Rudy Young, Public Works Department, for 20 years of dedicated employment. This honor is conferred the 3rd day of October, 2022. All right, Lucian Craig, would you come up? Yeah? Would you come up? Yeah. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Craig Helmut, Downtown Main Street Association, for five years of dedicated employment. Chief of Public Affairs? With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Adam Merrill, Police Department, for 10 years of dedicated employment. All right, Paul Hendricks? With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Paul Hendricks, with the Police Department, for 15 years of dedicated employment. Todd and I go way back. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Todd Cook, with the Police Department, for 20 years of dedicated employment.
Do you want to go ahead and come up?
Yeah. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Missy Shelton, with the City Council Department, for 15 years of dedicated employment.
Get a picture.
Thank you.
Everybody squeeze in, yeah. Everybody come on down. Come on. Sorry, Rosie.
Can I just speak?
How's your body? Can you get in?
He's like your photo.
Yeah. I'm just supposed to be here right there.
Get it?
Yeah.
All right. Congratulations.
That's some grudge.
All right, this time, we have public recognition. We'll start the chair. Janet?
I would just like to recognize one of our organizations in the community, Habitat for Humanity. Past year, 429,000 was generated from the Habitat bill to put back into our local economy. Over 5,440 hours were donated by 766 volunteers, and I just wanted to mention that, and I don't think a lot of people know what goes into that organization and how much good they do for our community. So, thank you.
Rosie?
Yes. First, I would like to thank the City of Tupelo for your generous donation and helping us put on our first annual, well, our first Saving Our Youth in Haven Acres. We had a great turnout. We also want to thank Chief Kelly, Fire Chief Kelly, for donating the lights, making sure that his staff came out, make sure the lights worked, and picking them up on time. I also want to thank Chief Quaka for being present and making his staff present and to ensure we had a safe turnout. I also want to thank Joe McCaff and Jay Green for heading up our Saving Our Youth program in Haven Acres to take back our streets. It was a success. We had a few hicups. Well, we gonna deal with those. So, I just want to thank everybody for, that works at the city. I want to thank everybody who came out and supported. Tom Bigby came out, they set up a tent, they brought balls and bouncy stuff for the kids. Also, we had the Boy Scouts of America that came out and also had up a tent where the kids were able to shoot water guns and things of that nature. So, the whole city, I asked, they showed up, and I do appreciate everything y'all are doing to help turn that area into a safe area. I also want to thank SAFE for everything that they do. They were out on the front line yesterday, and Mayor Jordan and I and Anthony Roger, we joined in with their celebration and thank him for all they do. Thank you for everything that y'all do here at the City of Tupelo.
Buddy? Nettie?
There's several things I want to mention. We hear people say there's not enough going on in Tupelo where there is. It's a whole lot of stuff scheduled for this weekend, and it'd be good if everybody would come out and support that. One of the events is Faith and Blue that's being sponsored by the Tupelo Police Department. It'll be Saturday at 12:00 at Fair Park, and this is with their inviting churches and other groups to attend that. I wanted to mention the NAACP banquet where that will be taking place on Saturday night at the Candace Bank Center. As I got to get used to saying that, it's Banco South Center, but it's changed to Candace Bank Center now, and we hope that people will support that. Olivia, who is Miss Washington DC, would be the speaker at that event. I would like to invite everybody to come downtown on Saturday, the 7th and 8th, fall in Tupelo. And the Chili Festival, and then Saturday Family, Fall Family Fun Day, and they will have an excellent band down there that I'll be trying to hang in there and be there to see them perform from Memphis. And then, I would also like to give support to Ride to Rosemary, which is a group coming from Memphis to Hilton Garden Inn on Saturday from 4:25, it's 7 to 1 motorcyclists that will be coming to that. So, we have plenty to do in Tupelo, so I don't want to hear anybody say we don't have a lot going on in the city.
Traps, I'm here. I don't have anything. Mayor, Mayor's report.
I don't have much, but I just want to touch on something that Rosie mentioned. You know, the first annual Haven Acres, you know, I think, I think part of our city sometimes feels left out, and I know that each, each part of town over the years has kind of felt that way in the south part of town, and because of your leadership, everybody's getting involved.
Thank you.
And because we have a lot going on, it's because of you guys sitting here and our department heads and then employees, so it really takes a team effort. And last weekend, when you had a lot going on, this weekend, you know, we can't do that every weekend, but, but it really shows that everybody's working together and everybody cares about our community and wants everybody to have a safe place and something to do on a weekly basis. So, I just want to say thank you to the council and thank our department heads for doing what they do on a daily basis. Thank you.
So, at this time, we're going to close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Public agenda, item for public hearings, item two, in the matter of public hearings for lot mowing. Is anybody here to speak for lot mowings? Okay, item three, in the matter of public hearing for the demolition of 5661 Butler Road. Anybody here to talk about the demolition of 5661 Butler Road? All right, item four, in the matter of public hearing for the rezoning of parcels surrounding East Main Street from Highway 45 to Veterans Boulevard. Anybody here to speak on that? Yes, could you come forward, please? And when you get to the podium, could you state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Certainly. Good evening. My name's Matt Boge. I actually represent the owners of two parcels that are in this disputed, I say disputed, in this proposed rezoning area, and the name of the ownership group is Victory Properties LLC. And we own the Shell Station and the office that is on the south side of East Main, and then the Sprint Mart Station. Both are convenience store properties that's on the corner of Veterans and East Main. And I just simply, I certainly won't take five minutes, but I just simply wanted to express concern about the proposed rezoning, and the reason for that concern is due to a fear of devaluation of property because of the future restrictions on the, the use of that property and the potential sales, the potential sale of that property. It's not difficult to foresee a future in which our properties, which are used to sell retail motor fuels, there, if you read the news, there's obviously, there's a shifting dynamic in the sale of motor fuels, and it's not difficult to foresee a future in which those properties may have to be used for a different purpose, because we're simply driving different vehicles, vehicles powered by a different type of fuel, whether that be battery-powered or some other type of fuel. That being said, I have concerns that changing the zoning from MUCC1 to MUD results in a limitation in the, limitation in the future use of those properties in which we may not be able to resell those properties in the future for things like, that would make sense, like a medical facility, a warehouse, or a distribution facility. When we purchased the office beside the Shell Station on the south side of East Main, that, that was actually the purpose. It was a, it was a small, it was an office and a small warehouse for the distribution of lubricants, and so that would no longer be able to be used for that purpose in the MUD zoning. So, I just wanted to publicly express those concerns about that, that rezoning. I appreciate the time and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you guys and do that. Any questions that I can answer?
Thank you. Now, have you discussed this with Ginny and Tanner?
I haven't. First time I brought it up, right here. I actually live in Columbus. This is, this is...
I would suggest you talk to Ginny Savely, who's the city planner, and Tanner Newman, who's the director of development services, and I think that your fears can, I think that they can help you.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions that I can answer? Okay, thanks.
All right, item five, in the matter of public hearing, the rezoning of parcel surrounding West Main Street from Madison to Gloucester. Do we have anybody here to speak on that? Okay, seeing none. Item six, in the matter of public hearing for ordinances amending the Development Code, TA 22-03-01 through TA 22-03-26. Do we have any, I need to speak on that. Okay? Next is appeals. We have none. We have no citizens' hearing. At this time, we're going to close the public agenda and open the regular session, and at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion from Mr. Palmer to take item seven through 32 off the table.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table item seven through item 32.
So, we have a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Rosie Jones, and at the, and so, we're going to take a quick vote. All in favor of taking them off the table? The motion carries. So, before we go through these, I'm going to have Tanner Newman discuss these, and we've actually broken this into 25 or so different parts of this, this ordinance, so if we have some issues like was just brought up or whatever, the whole ordinance doesn't get hung up on appeal, just a certain section of it does, and Mr. Newman is going to discuss that right quick before we go through all 25. Tanner?
Mr. President, before we dive in, I would like to ask Downtown Main Street, Ms. Savely, our city planner, CBP Director Neil, to come on up, because what we have for you tonight is the final product of a months-long collaborative effort between the City of Downtown Tupelo Main Street Association, the Tupelo Convention and Visor Bureau, and Tupelo Redevelopment Agency. What we have is a rezoning or rather an expansion of the downtown mixed-use zone. This will encompass East Main Street from Highway 45 to Veterans Boulevard into the downtown zone, along with West Main from Madison Street to Crotown. And so, before we kind of get into the specifics of what it looks like, I'd like Ginny and Bush and Neil all come up and say a few words about the role they play in this process, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions before we take a vote. Come on.
So, like Tanner said, we're really excited to present you guys with this collaborative effort. We've been working on just generally our overlay districts as part of the update to the Development Code, and in getting in that, seeing what downtown, through the iterations of planning over decades, how it has grown, we want to see what the future holds for downtown. And CBP and Downtown Main Street have been very supportive, as has the community, in this effort to expand our tax payment district and to really improve and expand upon the pedestrian revenue, family and entertainment-centric space that downtown has become, and as a central hub for the entire city to enjoy. The code that you're looking at here, codifying all of these ordinances, will allow us to really engage with some clustered use downtown, and we think that it will engage who is coming off of 45 and our gateway to the west through downtown, through Crotown, and we're very excited about what you'll see in the future as development continues and how we can grow kind of from the inside out and create some really lively spaces for our community.
Thank you so much for conceding this, council. I just want you to know that Downtown Tupelo Main Street Association is in support of this. It has been discussed with our board. They are excited about it. This came out, as I've said before, from the 2019 refresh, where we took a look and studied downtown, where we needed to go from here, and we are excited about this. We are ready to assist those in Gateway East and Gateway West and continue the momentum that we have in Tupelo. Thank you so much for your consideration.
And I'm going to echo what Ginny said. This is a long-range play with this, this decision and this work that we've done. I think we can all agree that the hub of downtown Tupelo looks fantastic, and that was a long-range play 30 years ago, and now this is us moving out from the good work that we've done in the core of our community, and I think that this will be a great presentation for our visitors as they arrive in Tupelo. The city's done the heavy lifting about 10 or 15 years ago with the streetscape and the sidewalks and the decorative lighting and the landscaping along East Main, and this just brings our properties into a very similar pattern than as to what's already in downtown. So, well, from the CBP's perspective, we're excited about what this is for a long-range play.
Thank you all.
So, Mr. President, this is something that, again, has been in works for months now. It's actually something that came up last year after this administration took office, and those conversations led to this joint effort amongst these four organizations. I will say that, you know, we are all very proud of downtown Tupelo and what it is today, and I think most people in this room can remember 30 years ago and recall that what we have today was certainly not the way it existed then. What we have did not just happen overnight. It took real vision and leadership of those before us, and we're thrilled to be a part of this next chapter of downtown Tupelo. Essentially, you have three items here. I know it's broken down into quite a few more than that as far as ordinance-wise, but you have the rezoning of East Main, rezoning of West Main, and then the text amendment to the Development Code, which offers some definitions and clarifies a few things, but this is all going through the Planning Committee. It was a public hearing held at Planning Committee level. Obviously, we've had a work session with the council to go over each of these items. I'm happy to answer any questions, and as we go through each of these votes, if there is, if there are any question on that specific item, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
And then, just for you and Ginny to get with the representative from Sprint Mart and Victor Energy and Libiate any fears that they may have on the, their problem.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so at this time...
For the information.
I'm sorry.
If we can, I don't know how much of the Planning Committee and staff recommendations have been submitted to the council. I know that we had the several work, the work session, and we've discussed all of this at length. If those supporting documents...
And as we go through each of these votes, if there is, if there are any question on that specific item, I'm happy to answer that.
And then just for you and Ginny to get with the representative from Sprint Mark, and Victor Energen, alleviate any fears that they may have on the, their problem.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So at this time.
For information.
I'm sorry.
If we can, I don't know how much of the Planning Committee and staff recommendations have been submitted to the council. I know that we had the several work, the work session, and we've discussed all this at length. If those supporting documents can be, if you can get those to Missy, she's probably got them here and there. And if you can just get one, one thing that we can give to her to put in the minutes for the, for the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. So at this time, we're going to work our way through items seven through thirty-two. And I'm going to ask for a motion, and then read it off. I'll read it off, get a motion in a second, and we'll just move through these. So do I have a motion to approve the ordinance rezoning of partial fronting East Main Street from Highway 45 to Veterans Boulevard, RZ 22-03, the official zoning map of the city of Tupelo?
So moved. In unison.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go with Buddy. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Nettie Davis. Any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Do I have a motion for approving the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, to rezone parcels between Church Street and Gloucester Street?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Travis Beer. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Do I have a motion approving ordinance amending the Development Code, Chapter Two, definitions and rules of construction and other code subsections affected by the definition changes, TA 22-03.01?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Janet Gaston, and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending certain business subsections of Section 5.1, purpose and applicability in certain subsections of Section 5.2, primary use, Development Code, Chapter Five, overlay districts, TA 22-03.02?
I make a motion.
Second.
I got a motion by Rosie Jones, and a second by Travis Beer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the ordinance amending the Development Code by amending subsection 5.3.3, designating sub-districts, TA 22-03.03.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Chad Mills. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion approving an ordinance amending Development Code, by amending Development Code, by amending composite figures 5.3.3, sub-district overlay map changes, TA 22-03.04.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Janet Gaston. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion approving the ordinance amending the Development Code by amending subs, correction, by amending Section 5.3, misuse downtown overlay district subsections 5.3.4.1 and 5.3.4.2, including figure 5.3.4, TA 22-03.05.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Janet Gaston. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. I have a motion amending the ordinance, approving the ordinance amending Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.1, map for judicial sub-district, TA 22-03.06.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Rosie Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion approving the ordinance amending the Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.2, map for the city central retail sub-district, TA 22-03.07.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Rosie Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? I have a motion approving the ordinance amending the Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.3, map for financial sub-district, TA 22-03.08.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Rosie Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion approving the ordinance amending Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.4, map for Coliseum Sub-District, TA 22-03.09.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, those, Mr. President. Any discussion? All in favor? So the question you had is.
My numbers aren't matching your numbers.
These numbers are updated from legal, the way that they wanted the, the motions read. I'm reading off, directly off the actual ordinance and not the minutes.
You don't want them read again, do you?
No, we just want to make sure we're on the same page.
State the nominee on, so we can keep up with it.
Okay. This will be, all right, hold on a second.
Eighteen.
We'll be on number eighteen right now.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion approving the ordinance amending Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.5, map for Gateway East Sub-District, TA 22-03.10.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item eleven, I mean, correction, item nineteen. I have a motion approving the ordinance amending the Development Code, a subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.6, map for Gateway West Sub-District, TA 22-03-11.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Nettie Davis. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty. Motion approving the ordinance amending Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.7, map for Fairgrounds Sub-District, TA 22-03.12.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Janet Gaston, and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-one. I have a motion approving the ordinance amending Development Code, subsection 5.3.3, by adding figure 5.3.3.8, map for major development sub-district, TA 22-03.13.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Travis Beer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-two. I have a motion to approve ordinance amending Development Code to amend subsection 5.3.4, by replacing current unnumbered table with allowed uses table, 5.3.4.3.1, residential uses, TA 22-03.14.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Janet Gaston. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I just missed another whole other page. I catch my breath here.
I need some water.
I'm all right. All right. Item twenty-three. Motion approving the ordinance amending Development Code to amend subsection 5.3.4, by replacing current unnumbered table with allowed non-residential uses table, 5.3.4.3.2, non-residential uses, TA 22-03.15.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Nettie Davis. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-four. Motion to approve ordinance amending Development Code by amending subsections 5.3.4.4, compatibility standards, 5.3.6, design standards, and 5.3.7, review process, TA 22-03.16.
So moved.
I got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Rosie Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-five. Motion approving ordinance amending Development Code by amending subsection 5.3.5, height and area tables, 5.3.5A and 5.3.5B, TA 22-03.17.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Travis Beer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. A motion to approve an ordinance amending certain subsections of Section 5.5 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, concerning the Joiner Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Janet Gaston. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve an ordinance to repeal Section 5.6 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, concerning the Sharon Hills Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second Travis Beer. This is item twenty-seven, so everybody keeping up. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve an ordinance to replace, this, this is item twenty-eight, a motion to approve an ordinance to replace the previously repealed Section 5.6 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, with the establishment of the Park Hill Business District Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Travis Beer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-nine. A motion to approve an ordinance to repeal Section 5.7 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, concerning the Bel Air Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Janet Gaston. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item thirty. Got a motion to approve an ordinance to replace the previously repealed Section 5.7 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, with the establishment of the Mill Village Historic Preservation Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item thirty-one. I have a motion to approve an ordinance to Section 5.8 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, by changing the name and amending certain subsections concerning the West Jackson Neighborhood Redevelopment Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Travis Beer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And the last one. Item thirty-two. I have a motion to approve an ordinance to amend Section 5.9 of the Development Code of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, concerning the Winfield Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Travis Beer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Pass that down to Mr. Logan, please. All right. At this time, item thirty-four and item, correction, item thirty-three and item thirty-four are still on the table. And we'll be readdressing those in a later council meeting. At this time, we're going to move to the routine agenda. Item thirty-five, in a matter of approval of minutes of regular meeting on September the twentieth, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Janet Gaston. All in favor? Motion carries. Item thirty-six, in a matter of bill pay.
Motion, we pay the bill.
Got a motion by Travis Beer.
Second.
And a second by Rosie Jones. The bills were paid today by Travis Beer, Buddy Palmer, Nettie Davis, and myself. All in favor? Motion carries. Item thirty-seven, in a matter of advertising and promotional items.
We accept the advertising and promotional items.
Second.
I've got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Buddy Palmer. Buddy, could you read those off? Do you have them in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Give them to my force.
Absolutely. Well, I don't have those. I'm sorry.
Again?
I don't. Here they are. I'll read them off. This is a proposed item for approval for purpose of advertising bringing in favorable notice to opportunities, possibilities, and resources of the city of Tupelo for the Haveness Acres Festival, $500, to Alvin Hatch, to Gabron Wilson, $150, that's the bouncy house, Kejon Schumpert, $200, for the Sound Man, and Jameric, Jamericus, $425, he is a musical artist. I'm sorry about the pronunciation. I hope it's close.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item thirty-eight, in a matter of municipal compliance questionnaire.
I move that we approve the matter of acceptance of municipal compliance questionnaire.
Second.
I've got a motion by Nettie Davis, and a second by Chad Mills. Kim Hannah.
Yes, each year when we complete the fiscal year, which ended nine-thirty, 2022 this year, each year when we complete that year, we have to fill out this questionnaire. It has to be placed in the minutes and given to the auditors. It is exactly what the title indicates. It is a compliance questionnaire, which includes everything from required advertising to, to a little bit of everything. Deadlines we have to meet with budget, nepotism, everything. So it covers pretty much everything. It's categorized out, and the answer to every question should be yes.
Will we yes on every question?
Yes.
Any questions, Ms. Hannah? All in favor? Motion carries. Item thirty-nine, in a matter of acceptance of a grant award for Homeland Security Grant,
I'm moved to accept this grant.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer, and a second by Travis Beer. Abby.
Good evening. I'm just asking for your approval to execute this grant award with the Department of Homeland Security. This is for the police department, and this is for robotic total station accessory kit and live scan applicant software.
Any more discussion on the item? All in favor? Motion carries. Item forty, in a matter of acceptance of a grant award for Homeland Security Grant,
So moved. Thank you.
Got a motion by Janet Gaston, and a second by Rosie Jones. Abby.
Again, I'm asking for your approval to execute this grant award agreement. This is for our EOD unit at the police department, and this will be funding for an I-COR portable robot and various attachments.
Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item forty-one, in a matter of appointment of Amy Tate to the Tupelo Public School Board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer, and a second by Chad Mills. Any discussion, Mayor?
Yeah, you've got Amy's bow there. Graduate of Mississippi University for Women, currently manages Tennessee Valley Authority's relationships with the Mississippi Public officials. Recently named one of y'all politists. Recently named by Y'all Polite's Top 50 Influential Women in Mississippi and also been honored in the Mississippi Business Journal. She also teaches a leadership academy and co-founder did at Mylum and remains active teaching and she's a past president of the Association of Academic Excellence in Tupelo Public School District and, you know, she's got a pretty impressive resume and I think she'll be a great addition to the school board. She was here yesterday, but she couldn't be here this evening.
I think Amy's a good pick. Do we have any more questions?
Just well-qualified and be a great asset to the above school board.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item 42, in a matter of review and approve properties for lotmow.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer and a second by Rosie Jones. We had nobody, uh, came to discuss them and it looks like we have 10 properties that are fixing to get mowed tomorrow. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 43, in a matter of review and approve lien resolution for unpaid property cleaning and debris removal.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer and a second by Buddy Palmer. Tanner?
Mr. President, happy to report that 10:15 Chickasaw Trail has been cleaned up and this is a lien for the unpaid cleanup. Just ask the council approve that lien until we receive full payment.
How much is the lien for, Mr. Newman?
$5,600.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 44, in a matter of review and approve property for demolition.
Motion to approve the property for demolition.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Travis Beer. Tanner?
Mr. President, this is the abandoned mobile home out on Butler Road that we received many complaints about. I am happy to report that as of this afternoon, half of that mobile home has been moved outside of the city limits and the other half is expected to be moved tomorrow. Ask the council to go ahead and adjudicate the property just to ensure that the removal is completed.
Any more questions, Tanner? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 45, in a matter of review and accept planning committee minutes of September the 12th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Rosie Jones. Tanner, is there anything other than routine matters on this?
This, these minutes reflect the planning committee's recommendation to approve the rezoning of downtown along with the text amendments that you all just voted on.
Any more questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 46, in a matter of a memorandum of understanding with the city of Tupelo and the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Travis Beer and a second by Janet Gaston. John?
Yes, I ask you to approve a memorandum of understanding with the FBI. They are asking for this agreement with us. This is the predecessor of us putting a task force officer on their Safe Streets Task Force, which will target violent crimes in Tupelo.
Any questions, Chief Walker? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 47, in a matter of approval of Bank for South Arena Minutes of August the 15th, 2022.
May I have to approve?
Second.
Yeah, a second by, was that Janet?
Mm-hmm.
Second by Janet Gaston. And I think Kevin yesterday said it was nothing but routine stuff. And what day will we quit getting Bank for South minutes and start getting Cadence Arena Minutes? I guess that'll be, what, October, Ben?
Let's see, 11.
Okay. Very good. All in favor? Minutes are approved. Item 42, change order number two to the Court Street Parking Lot. Got a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Travis Beer and a second by Nettie Davis. Who is it? Dennis did that? Is he here? Okay.
Neil.
Neil, what we got?
This is the final payout on Court Street Parking Lot. We brought before you a change order previously where we just added the brick columns, so this is just closing out that project.
Okay. Unlike architectural project, engineering projects are done on unit basis and so they're, at the end of the job, all the unit quantities are put together and in this case, they use more units than were originally estimated and this is going to pay the difference to square up the project. Any questions, Neil? All in favor? Change order is approved. We have nothing on the study agenda. Mr. Logan, do we need to determine the need for an executive session?
Yes, Mr. President. I've been informed we have two potential properties for sale and one for purchase and all three of those transactions. We've authorized a proper matter to discuss in executive session.
Okay. At this time, we need to determine the need for an executive session. Do I have a motion?
May I have to determine the need for executive session?
Second.
Got a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Nettie Davis and the council has said that we do meet the need for one. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion by Travis Beer and a second by Janet Gaston. All in favor? City council's in executive session. Mr. Logan, who do we need in here?